Workshop to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which is saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with a rooty, just a straw.
I need a motion to appoint a clerk pro temp.
To appoint Anna Rooney as clerk pro temp.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Aho. We'll call.
Kristen Flynn, here. Georgia Pachin, here. Craig Wolf.
Present.
Anthony Zhang.
Here.
Bill Zoff.
Here.
Mary Kewer, here. Candy Gaston.
Here.
Anthony White.
Present. Mr. Kowski absent.
Okay.
Excuse, absent.
All right. I need a motion to waive agenda items. First of all, Anna, you wanted to review the fire exits.
Fire exits are in the rear of the LGI.
All right. I need a motion to waive agenda items 2.01 through 2.10.
Motion to waive agenda items 2.02 through 2.10. Second.
Georgia first. Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. All right. We're on tonight's workshop, which is gonna be a discussion of the board goals. So, the last time that we discussed board goals, we had a nice conversation and I know that people were adding to a Google Doc and people were sharing that. I don't know, Kristen, was that shared with you? And Craig? I think Meredith shared it with you.
I think it was the night that we were appointed that it was first brought up. And then it's been, it's been a part of our, at least on our email, it's a Google Doc.
Emails.
Actually, I thought the board goals were what we were developing the night of the board retreat. I thought those were.
That was communication.
I think that was a communication protocol.
But I thought there was some.
There was some conversation and then that's when we had the workshop afterwards to start talking about more specific of the board goals. So, I just wanna say, Mr. Rakowski did share some thoughts with the board. So, if I, speaking for what he has, I'll just make sure and highlight and say this is per mic, just so you guys know. So, how do we wanna start this conversation? Do we wanna have people share? I think that appropriately, we should have at least, you know, no more than five board goals. Maybe, I think three or four would be ideal, because we'd probably be adopting them for the remainder of this year. And then what we would do is, when we, we could have a goal discussion in the summertime, so we have them in place for the next school year. So, when we're having the conversation, just keep in mind that we'll probably have them for the remainder of this year. And then, what we'll do is, once the election and so forth and preparing for the 17, 18 school year, we would have that discussion hopefully in the summer. So then when we're making discussions about it, we could, we have goals to align decisions with.
So you're talking basically, you go major.
Yeah. I wanna know what you think about it. I'm not saying that's what it is. I wanna know what other people's thoughts are, if that seems like a plan.
It's good to establish the timeframe. I'm glad you said that, you know, because year could mean different things depending upon what year you're talking.
Right.
So if we're talking the end of the school year, it's fairly short term. Then we redo this exercise updated in the summer.
Right. And just keep in mind that we're going through that budget process now, so some of the goals could be in line to some of the decisions that we have to make for the budget. So.
Can we just make sure we're on the same page? Could you maybe define what you mean by board goals? You know, are they different than district goals and superintendent goals, so that we all kinda on the same page? Because some of the things I looked at, to me, were not board goals, they were more district goals. But, you know, I wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
Sure. So I think that when we're discussing board goals, and this is my definition, so feel free to chime in and share your definitions as you deem fit. I think the board goals that we're talking about are goals that the buildings and district administration can align to fit underneath the board goals. So, they're broad enough as to give direction to what administration, so some decisions that the administration would have to make decisions on, such as, the hot topic right now is class size. That might be something that we wanna address as a board goal, is how would we address class sizes? Maybe something about curriculum, not specific with a class, but something to enhance curriculum for the 21st century. So it's broad enough that they have the leniency to develop programming and based on what the needs are of the kids, but something to give direction to the administrators and the district administrators. And then, the, I envision the building goals falling underneath, so it's like an umbrella. So ours would be broader than more specific. So, the district administration goals could then fall underneath and the principal's goals could fall underneath.
I would just call it a district goal. I mean, that's, in my, in my book, that's district goal. To me, I look at a board goal as, as things more having to do with our goals related to the operation of board, how we work with the community. So example, I think one of Mike's goals, or maybe it was Kristen's, was having to do with communication with the, with the public, you know. And that, to me, is a true board goal, because it's, it's how we operate in conjunction with outside forces or, whereas I look at, I mean, it's fine, I mean, you know, whatever definition. To me, as a, district goals are the goals that we're setting, you know, for how we want the, the overall district to, you know, have, have a series of, of aims that, and objectives that, you know, we want them to try and go to, you know, move towards.
So would that be a separate conversation, in your mind? Like a, or separate a vision?
I sort of see it ideally as, there's, there's not a huge difference, except that one can be brought down to the granular level, but the other is kind of a 10,000-foot view. So I think that the board's goals can be sort of broadly defined. Like the, the topic of communication, there's a lot of ways to execute on a very high level goal of responsiveness and increasing communication and finding more outlets. If we make that our goal, then there's, if that filters down and what we ultimately want, I think, is for building leadership, for teachers, for people to take ownership and kind of run with that goal. Like, apply it in every way that they come in contact with people. So, I think, like with class size, to me, that sort of fits into this, what is, what is sort of optimal at the different age level? Because I actually don't think we should cap class size as like a goal when kids get older. I don't think it's as important. But I think that, you know, if we say something like, our goal is to find the best practices, you know, as they apply to each student or each student group in the district. And that's sort of how I see it. But, does anybody else?
I, I think with class size, it's, it should be a continual. It doesn't mean that because they're older that they wouldn't, that it shouldn't be capped just as much. Because I think we've had, in the past, there was a fringe class, I think, that was overpopulated. And it was very disruptive and caused students to wanna drop out of the class and stuff.
So I was negligent, I just wanna, I was negligent and I didn't introduce Matt as here as part of it. We all said present and here, but forgot Matt, so apologize. Present.
Happy to be here.
But just so people watching know that, yes, this is our future superintendent, Dr. Matt Landell, that will be, he's sitting at the table with us and being, to be part of the conversation. So I didn't say that because it wasn't mentioned in the, so, sorry. So, Anthony, I'm sorry, I cut you off before.
I don't have a preference of how vague or broad or specific or whether it's board or district, but I, I am worried that maybe we're duplicating some efforts. For example, the class size, there is an older policy that's still in force because it wasn't replaced. We can set policy on the class size without having to argue about it as board goals. I also am a little confused as to which document we are working from. There are quite a few, I think there's three different board goal versions in my Google Drive. Can we put it up on the screen, the one we're actually working on?
I'm not working off any document. I was just stating that as a reference point, so people knew, like, I took that document and I revised it for what I wanted to present for myself, so I'm not referring to any doc. I was just letting the, especially Kristen and Craig know that we did in the, in the past create a Google Doc that we were working off of. I wasn't working off of that tonight. I was just more so, because I adjusted what I originally put on that, because things have changed in the district and stuff, so I'm not working off.
Is there restriction as to how many we want, or?
Yeah.
I think that, if people are in agreement, no more than five. Can we agree on no more than five?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have the summary that you made after the board goal meeting and what, well, Mike, on his, is to celebrate successes, and I think we can cross the first goal off of the list, which was to hire new superintendents. So, thank goodness, we are through that process and can.
It's not, it doesn't have to be a goal, but can it be like a aspiration that we actually celebrate that at some moment? Feeling we hired Matt, we were like, and the agenda.
Here's a show.
Now you'll be here till one. Congratulations. I mean, I think that was helpful for you to say, but just feel like maybe we should.
Yeah.
Some cake.
So, one of my goals that I would like to start out with was to improve communication with community support of the district as a whole by promoting its positive attributes, which has the celebration success that Mike stated. Maintaining open lines of communication, encouraging parents and community members' involvement. And then I gave like some examples of what I'm referring to in that statement, because it is broad. Hiring processes, making sure that that's known for the administration and the community. Parent workshops, continue to have parent workshops. Different district communication protocols, making sure that that system's in place and so forth. So, it's broad, but that's some of the examples I was referring to when I structured the wording of it.
Yeah. I too listed establishing a communication system within the district that increases trust within families and community. So I think that that seems to be one of the greatest concerns, is the, the ability to send a message and get a message and then follow up. So, I don't know how anybody else feels, but communication is gonna struggle for me.
So, can, just to, so we can, does everyone have something about communication as one of their goals? So we could put as a topic for a goal, one of the four or five goals would be communication and then we could wordsmith it? Okay. So I'm gonna just put one, communication.
You also mentioned parental involvement as part of yours?
Yeah. Communication with the community. It was communication with community and stuff.
Families and community. What you're saying, like the workshops fall under?
Well, I was thinking parental involvement's not exactly the same as communication. I mean, you know, I mean, if you're trying to encourage parental involvement, that, that's a lot more than just communication. Because you can communicate with them and they communicate back to you, but it doesn't, to me, parental involvement's a lot more than just.
Well, and that, that's what the last part said, and encouraging parent and community member involvement.
Right.
So that was the communication and then the workshops were more of, how can we?
That would be one way.
Present, right. Okay.
I think that you're saying tweak, it's a just mean communication, not necessarily.
Well, I mean, I was thinking more broadly about parental involvement, which, you know, you know, getting, in, having them go into the classrooms, doing volunteer work, things like that, which is more than just communication. But I mean, that's fine. If you, if you meant it just under the auspices of communication, that's fine.
Yeah. I see that as community engagement. It's something, it's a little discreet in the sense that it's about a kind of a, an approach, a leadership approach, sort of welcoming and open and accessible. I think communication has to do with how information is shared.
So maybe, so maybe there's a community, a community engagement goal as well, then, a separate goal?
Do you guys want that as a goal target?
I had that as one of my goals.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Why, when you mention it, it's kind of.
There was a lot of, yeah, overlap with that particular goal, increasing parent and community involvement.
I have high levels of collaboration with the community.
So all community engagement would be a second goal?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we could work on wordsmithing. I think if we get the topics of what headings the goals fit underneath, then we could start wordsmithing them and then we'll at least have a general basis as to how we're going. Are people okay working that way? So what would be another headline for another goal?
So is this, just for clarity, because I don't wanna, this is, is it kind of like a shorter-term discussion and then we're gonna revisit this also? Is this kind of goals until the summer and then?
Right. And then, because there may be a new board in place, because we have. So then, I'm anticipating that the new board would then, in the summertime, set the goals for that year. So then, when decisions are being made by administration, they could say, hey, it fits this goal or it falls underneath this goal and so forth, to help them align what they're recommending and the practices that they're doing.
I'd like to see the board dot for goals, the, what we're working on in diversity committee, which is increase instructional staff diversity and identify slash moving barriers to impoverish slash minorities.
Okay.
So, but those are the goals of the diversity committee, right? So should they be also as a board goal or?
Well, it can be.
I mean, the diversity committee would definitely make definitions to the board and to the district about how to achieve those goals.
I mean, if the goal came first, the diversity committee would be one, one avenue of achieving the goal.
The way to do it.
Sort of backwards in this case, but it's still, it's nothing wrong with making that a.
It should be a board goal.
People need to make decisions, what are our goals? And is this decision, you know, going against that?
So if it's a board goal, what, what happens from that is that the diversity committee was formed because of that goal?
Right.
And from that, that would help us to achieve that.
And it would, and it would show continued support for the committee activities as well. I mean, part of the committee discussion we're gonna have after this meeting is, you know, we only have two more meetings left, but, you know, what can we get done in that short time and what can we do in longer time?
It is, it is okay to have goals aligned to things that are already in place, because then we're just gonna be enhancing those. So I don't want you to think it is bad to develop goals that, we don't have to do it for something that's not in place. We do have the community engagement, but we're looking to further that, I think.
So like the, I'm sorry. So like the diversity committee, not, not only because of the hiring process, but like what else are you guys thinking of coming up with as far as like to address the student needs in the community of our diverse populations? That should be part of the committee as well, not just the hiring process.
Oh, yeah. That's two. That's why Craig told me that it sounds like more like two goals, but.
But I think it is like a, I, this, so this goes to one of the goals that I sent, which was to think outside the box and more strategically. I think part of the, part of the reason actually is that, that I suggested that is that we, we're always gonna come up against limitations as far as, you know, budgetary, state requirements, all sorts of things that I feel like make us more reactive. And I think if we start thinking more strategically, so diversity being one of those things, we have a teacher shortage, we have, you know, we're going to be competing against other districts. So, I think that if we put diversity as kind of a centerpiece of our goals, that it should, it shouldn't just be about hiring. It should be about how we handle it every way in this district, whether it's staff, whether it's when we bring in a speaker, whether we have a special program, whether we seek to put that as sort of a priority when we are, you know, whether it's.
True.
Yeah. So, like I, I know that, the, I think he's had sort of a historically difficult time coming into the district, but somebody who runs the Beacon Film Festival, he's African-American.
Is that Terry?
Terry, yeah. He's going to his last meeting.
Yeah.
He's tried to come in and tried to do this animation program. I think he does it in other districts. And I, you know, he's a producer, he's somebody who I feel like if you could see yourself in the work he does, that that would be very powerful. I think that's sort of, I don't know, like I just wanna think outside the box more about diversity, because everything I seem to come across is about.
I think he, at one point, wasn't he, he did something for the district at one point, right? There was something with.
Well, he actually did, he was part of the after-school program, most recently.
Yeah.
So I think that's another example of, you know, the, the current leadership trying to make sure that they maintain stuff. And so certain things, unfortunately, when they're trying to keep things afloat, certain things get lost. So I look at that, Jeff Hines. At one point, sorry, at one, I should know that, J R N S, was, participated with the school district as well, through Black History events. And so he also expressed like his desire to bring it back. So.
I mean, that resource right here.
Bring it back to my program and then, you know, bring it back to the school if possible. So I think we're in a right position, because we now have a leader.
Yeah. I mean, I agree. I agree. I mean, Beacon Creative Space, you know, they were part of the, the I'm Tired project. And definitely, we can expand it to the diversity, not just to mean instructional staff, but also could mean diversity of ideas, diversity of culture, diversity of thought.
And I, I think that one of the things that, it always gets tripped up sort of on just ethnicity, but I think increasingly being focused on economic diversity and issues that, you know, listeners, I feel like we are hitting this like fork here at Beacon, where there's going to be a, a big difference between, it's always been a big difference. Yeah. No, I do, I, yeah, I.
It's not just, it's not a new, it's not a new topic. It's not a new.
Yeah. I will say that there's gonna be some wordsmithing that we're gonna have to do.
Right. So what I was gonna do is I had diversity as the third, diversity, something to do with that. And then what I was gonna do is whoever's recommending a goal, if it's two people or three people, maybe they could start putting a statement together. So then, we could start working off of that. So I have communication, community engagement, diversity, so we have three goals so far.
Create equality across all schools in the district, literary literacy, 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 by supporting functional library time and support. So I know that the libraries vary based on schools. I don't think they have the same, like I know J V S just was fortunate to have like a major.
So can I say that's curriculum? Curriculum.
Yeah. We could broaden that, because I had, you know, examined our current curriculum offerings to ensure that we were offering the best possible educational students and ensure that it consisted across all.
Like the one language high school, like we.
Did other people have curriculum as a area for a goal?
But I think the curriculum should also add in some kind of vocational role as well. I mean, you know, we have the OSIs, which is great, but I think there's some more things and we have to look at like our entire population, not just, you know, a small segment of the population. You know, we have special education students who, who can go on to college and, you know, a lot of them do, but we have some other things. So what are we doing to prepare everyone for life after high school?
And my comment that I had for curriculum was enhance the educational curriculum, K-12, to meet the learning needs of all children for the 21st learning century. And my examples were more like the law for class trips, specials, you know, like more like, so it's general base, but it was curriculum piece.
I want to say something else. Given the timeframe that we discussed earlier, we'll be very active over the next meetings in looking at the budget. And I think there's been a good deal of discussion about trying to maximize the amount of improvement that we can manage in the educational segment of the budget, which translates to things like class sizes and additional teachers and so on. So it seems like a very logical goal that we would, in this few months that we have left before the budget goes up for a vote, to try to focus on maximizing the extent to which we can get money into the place where we really want it to be. I think we're gonna do that anyway.
So fit, being fiscally responsible to enhance educate academic needs, but also being fiscally responsible, so.
Yeah. I think you throw the word budget into that sentence someplace, you got it.
I had a, a small thing to add to that, that I think belongs there. It's also a policy issue, but I wanted to make it a board policy that we, that all qualifying programming that can go through the OSIs coaster does. This is something that I've been working on for six years, and it seems like a small thing, but there's definitely a huge barrier to implementing it. So I feel like if it becomes a board goal, maybe then it would happen.
Anybody else have something with a goal with budgetary or fiscal, fiscally responsibility?
It might fit under community, but I think looking for, for partners and that have programs that they can bring. I have a list of partners that was developed a while ago.
Where that could fall underneath curriculum as well.
It kind of falls underneath everything. Because I think that we, I, I know that a while back, I talked to Hudson Valley Murderers Workshop, and they, at the time, and I don't know what happened with this, but they were, they were excited to find out that Beacon had a universal pre-K program, because they were working on a grant specifically focused on pre-K population. This was a while ago, so I don't really know what ended up happening. But it was surprising to me how excited they were, recognizing that Beacon has a very economically and racially diverse population, and then also that they, Beacon wasn't really on their radar. So sort of reaching out to community partners, I think it sort of fits with fiscally responsible, because in the, in light of the fact that we can't, we do have constraints on the budget. So we will try to maximize, but then there, that shouldn't limit our, our ability to bring programming.
If I can also add, I mean, Mike had recommended 10, 11 things, and I'm not gonna read them all, but one of them was to bring the spending per pupil in, in general education in line with other districts. And I don't know where we are with that to begin with. Every department has developed a five-year plan, which includes current state benchmarks, what excellence looks like, identification, gaps, and a plan to achieve, and then a five-year plan for facilities, operations. I think those are also budget concerns.
Anthony, I, I think they're more also, I don't think they're more board goals, like I think they're too specific for that.
Well, I mean, if you set the goal where that fits, you know, don't, not that we've set a goal and that doesn't fit, I guess.
Say that again?
I said, we should set the goal where that fits and not set a goal where that doesn't fit.
Which one? You mentioned a couple of them.
All right. I read off his number, his number four. Bring the spending per pupil in general education in line with other districts.
They're beyond fiscal?
They're beyond fiscal, yeah. So I was only reading his fiscal ones, what I told with fiscal ones, yeah. I wasn't reading all of them.
He also has one on student, celebrating the student.
Celebrating successes, yeah.
Which I do have something along for that, because Georgia and I, I think a year ago, right, Georgia, I think you attended in the summer and we celebrated the students. The board celebrated the students?
It wasn't.
Or the school?
It was, it was the school, celebrating really like, more of like this, not only special education students, but students who would normally, you know, maybe are not your top scholars, but, you know, recognize them for achievements that they've done within the school building. It could be special education students, general education students, but, you know, sometimes, you know, you go to these award ceremonies and they're always the top scholars and, you know, but celebrating, you know, everybody's successes. Because even if it's a, a small success for someone, it, it could be huge in their life and it could be what has made them, you know, go into a certain field or, you know, whatever their choices are during high school.
Just encourage them to go to school. So I put host in assemblies twice a year, working with teachers to celebrate student achievement, positive actions, not your typical honorable student. I don't know how that fits in. I think we can make.
I think we could fit that under communication if we're celebrating, because you're acknowledging, you're publicizing and so forth, so that could fall underneath communication. Piece?
And to answer your question, I also had the fiscal one as well, was one of the lines of the, you know, maximizing our financial resources for the benefit of our students.
I have one that I, I don't know if it really belongs to, but, and it's also one I don't really know that much about what we do in the district, but just increasing professional development for our teachers and opportunities for our teachers to grow.
I would say that's curriculum, like that could fall underneath curriculum. We can add something about PD in the curriculum piece? Can I just ask the administrators a question? You're hearing us talk about the goals and stuff. Are you seeing something that we're missing that we should be looking to focus on? Because we're up to, I have five topics, but are you seeing something that we may be neglecting, but is needed in the district?
I think they're broad enough to include a lot, so I think they're fine.
Okay.
The only thing I'd wonder is if we wanted to name more explicitly something around either student achievement, whether we keep that broad, so that it's academic as well as other, other forms of demonstration of student, student achievement, whether we're talking about extra, you know, extracurricular achievements, whether we're talking about social emotional development. That's connected to many and all of these, but it's just, it's just a question if we wanna name it explicitly. Certainly looking at communication, family and community engagement, commitment to diversity, the commitment to our curriculum and instruction and fiscal responsibility, all are aligned with the work that we've been doing.
I guess I'd say in some ways, you know, so far we've been talking about mostly our principles. When it comes down to the actual goals, you typically wanna set something that you can measure. And, and so, you know, you can, you can see progress towards and at some point you can[1762.14] And, and so, you know, you can, you can see progress towards, and at some point you can say, yeah, we are, we are doing something, you know, something. We've got the, we've got the broad principles right down. We, you know, at some point we need to say, okay, let's come up with some specific.
How to measure the.
Yeah, things in here that we can, you know, we can measure.
Yeah, let me say something similar. We can't just, we can't just stop it. All right, so here's our goals.
No, and that's where I was gonna go next. I just wanted to get the topics, so then we could start drilling down. But I did, can I put you on the spot? Because in my three years as a board, we didn't develop goals. So this is the first time I'm being through it besides observing, observing it from the outside. Is there anything that we're missing that, that you do, like in Ithaca, when you're doing workshops on board goals that we should be including or not? No, we, we use the term priorities for whatever reason instead of goals. And they're pretty much in line with what you're saying. We have five. And the, the strategies are kind of where everything, you know, happens. And the board and superintendent have something called an equity report card. And that is the way we track almost every single one of our priorities and underlying strategies. It's, they just unveiled, or we just unveiled a new equity report card, which is pretty involved. It took us a few years to get us to that point, but I, that goes back to the measuring part. So, so that's key. But this is all completely in line with what I've been involved with in the past, for sure. All right, I just wanted to make sure before we got too deep in that thing.
I don't know if this falls under communication or, or community, but, you know, we have the external community that, parents, residents, business owners, and we have an internal community. We have staff, both instructional and non-instructional. We should address, we should include both of them, not just, when we say community, I don't wanna say we're just gonna address the outside community, we also want to address the inside.
In, in the communications business, you refer to them as internal and external stakeholders. So everyone's a stakeholder, and you communicate with them, you can communicate with your internal stakeholders. One way, there's a variety of channels to do that, and then you identify how you communicate with your external stakeholders. This is kind of a weird one, 'cause I don't know exactly how we would measure it, but I feel like we need to define something about culture. And I think that we, I mean, we've, we've done things so far that I think do go for, go towards this, which is we had a, we hired an external firm to do a superintendent search. We went through an RFP process where we were very publicly discussed different, you know, options. And I feel like, you know, not to use the dreaded word transparency, but I feel like, and, and, and I, and I definitely get this, especially now having been on the board even for a short time, that a lot of it has to do with perception and, you know, how things are communicated. But I think something that indicates that we're gonna try to hit these sort of markers, whether it's, you know, yes, like a very clear hiring process. I guess process would be the word, a culture where there are processes and pathways that are clearly understood both by internal and external stakeholders. So whether it's a pathway for the advancement or, you know, because right or wrong, I feel like, and, and I, and I feel like it's kind of important to make a break from that.
Which is good.
And sort of draw this sort of line about like, not saying like, oh, everything's better now or one group did it right or one didn't, but rather like, we're gonna put a spotlight on this and we're gonna define it, and then, does that?
This is something under the communication category?
I don't, I don't know, I think it's a broader thing about, about.
I think it could be something that is like a, a lead-in to our goals, like something in, in general, like a little graph, like kind of like, you know, what we're, what we're developing and what we're looking for, for the Beacon City School District, and then lead into the goals.
I mean, when you say culture, I mean, to me, it could mean a lot of different things. It could mean that we want to foster a culture of respect. It could mean that we want to embrace openness. We want to, by example, teach the principles of, you know, even like humility, which, which sometimes I think is lost in, in translation these days. You know, so I'm not exactly, I mean, are we saying all of that? Are we saying some of that, or are we saying?
Just breaking that.
Well, I had this one thing that I'd seen, that's why. It said, create and perpetuate an intentional culture shaped by adults and rooted in universal values of honesty, caring, and towards achievement, and however we define that. But I kind of feel like, I mean, maybe that's a vision or something, but I do feel like.
Vision, yeah.
I know it seems sort of broad, but I, I do feel like just the, the risk that we run is even just, I, I feel like, you know, there's sort of heuristics that people have, especially if they've been part of an organization for a long time. And they can be very easily triggered, like the minute they feel like they're not included in something or that there's no process for them, they immediately go back to like, oh, nothing's changed. Like, I think we really have to sort of address that in a very forward way. Like, kind of almost listing the things that have changed and what we've tried to put into place and where we see that going, you know.
But that's what we're gonna be do, measuring with these goals?
Yeah, I guess so.
I mean, I'm more for adding culture as a, as a category. I, I just, and I guess we can work out what specifically we.
Yeah, maybe the vision is the better way to define it.
Is there any other, like headline topics that you guys? What, safety and security?
I don't know if it falls underneath, yeah, but establishing a semi-annual safety and security system assessment, assessment across the district, ensuring we are in compliance with state safety regulations. Committee should be derived from head security, building leaders, BOD members and administration. So that, there's a lot of things that happened throughout the district and throughout my three years and prior to that, that I hear, like, we're not, maybe we don't do, and I'm not really sure if we should be doing it, or we've done it already and not everyone knows about it, but there's a board policy on it, and I'm not too sure where we're gonna comply. I know, so I just have safety and security as an issue.
If there's a policy on it already, then, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure it needs to be a goal. It's something we should already be doing.
I think that's our number one concern in this district, is safety and security.
Right, but, but again, so I'm on the safety committee, and so the safety committee, we, we passed whatever we passed, however, we, we haven't met, and the school year was gonna end. And so I have no clue as to what it is. And so I'm searching, looking, I'm trying to connect the dots. And I try not to kind of, you know, overwhelm Ann Marie with it because she's, you know, stated that the person who needs to know about it is doing it. So I'm comfortable with it that way. But if we need to establish something to ensure the safety of the children and administrators and teachers in the building, I wanna know what that is and what it looks like.
And I mean, and that's something that I, that, I mean, you wanna make culture a vision. I'm, I'm saying that that could be a culture for a board.
What, safety and?
Yeah, safety and security. You know, promote a safe, an atmosphere of safety and security, as a, as a culture shift.
But there's, it sounds like maybe you, you might be talking about two different things, because I think there's a, there's a feeling of safety and security, and there's a factor of safety and security. So is that what you were speaking more to?
Yeah, I think that there's a state bandings. When I'm looking at certain things that we should be doing, and I'm not really certain that we are doing it. And then when I look at what the policy is, which I gotta be sure I'm looking at the right policy, I'm not really sure that we are doing what we need to do. And so our job is to set policy, and safety is in there, and we should be doing that. That's just my, like, you know, I'm one out of nine, I just.
Well, I think, so do you feel like it's implicit that one of our goals should be that we are in compliance with our policies, or do you feel like that should be a goal?
Oh, it should be, no, I think we should just be doing that, just.
Should be unspoken.
Right, it should just be, but I think again, if we, you know, we didn't evaluate, we just, you know, last year, I think we really moved ahead with looking at the policies. And then it wasn't that we weren't reviewing them, it's just that we got stuck in certain areas. And then now we kind of moved, moved full steam ahead, and I feel that we're so much more productive than we were last year, not because we chose to be more productive this year, but just because of the way things were flowing, so.
I agree with that, because I had policy as one of my goals prior, and I'm not even bringing it up as a thing, because I think that, that committee's moving and stuff.
Yeah, I'm not attached with that committee.
So just, I know that we're more than halfway through. So I have six, seven major topics, and what I'd like to do is, if you brought up a topic, would it be feasible to put a statement together, the statement of the goal together, so then we could come back and, and so forth? So I don't want everybody to focus on all five. What I'm saying is if you brought some, focus on one of them that you really believe in, or two of them that you really believe in, and I think if we do that, we'll have language for all five, and then we can present that language, so everybody has a copy, and then, then we could like, quickly, I mean, I don't wanna argue in mince over words, but quickly go over how to enhance that wording as a board.
So does anybody mind that since, do you want communication? Because I was gonna say.
And you said you had like eight?
What were you gonna say?
No.
That, just to build off the thing that are.
You said you had like six or eight?
There's, there's seven here, but what I'm saying is if we get the language as to.
Could you, could you read off of the seven, or, 'cause I stopped at five?
Sure, communication, community, diversity, curriculum, fiscally, being fiscally responsible, which is budgetary, culture, I, did we take that off because that was more vision?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's more vision, or I said, I was thinking of like something leading into the goals, like some kind of, you know, maybe some kind of chair over.
Okay, so I'm gonna remove culture then. Then I had safety and security, so that was the.
And again, I wonder if that's just a matter of making sure our policy is like that. Do you, are you, do you feel okay about that, Kenya, or do you?
Well, I'm gonna say we only need five, so I'll, I'll go back and do my research, and then if by the time.
And do, and if you wanna put a.
I'll do this in the summer, so.
Right, and if you wanna put a statement together for a possible goal, people might, so are we okay with like kind of focusing, like someone focusing on two, like, because there's gonna be overlap. And then, once we get that in writing, we could then really work on as a group. It's hard to come up with the exact language of the goal when we don't have a structure to go off of, I feel. So are we okay, can we just like say, go around and say which one you're gonna, which one or two you're gonna focus on, so people will know?
Yeah, just, just call each category.
So quick, communication.
I'll take it.
So Kenya.
So am I writing down everybody's ideas?
And I'll take it, I'll write it too. So I'll write what I feel, what I envision that communication goal.
Include Kristen, or no?
Include what you feel, and then we'll wordsmith it.
So he's saying two or three of us can sort of, we can hive it a little bit, like hive mine a little bit, put something together, and.
Share with the board, obviously we'll come back with the board, and then we could have a discussion. If we wanna say, change some language, we can, but I think.
Should we, can we like, like, if, if the, there's three of us working on it, could I send, could I do a draft and then send it to you guys, and you add on that, or vice versa? Would that be easier?
I think whatever the people that are working on it wanna do. And then we could set a time that we're gonna come back together to discuss it, hopefully sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
And then we could really have that goal set. So communication, it was.
You and I, Kenya.
Oh, Kristen said too? Community engagement. Kristen and Meredith.
I could do it too.
Anthony. Diversity.
I'll take that one.
Yeah, I'll go with Anthony.
Anthony, Kenya.
I'll jump in there too.
Georgia. Curriculum, I'll take that.
I'd like to work on that too.
I'll do that too.
I'll comment on that.
Sure you will, Kristen. Fiscally responsibility, Bill.
And Mike, right?
Craig.
You better have Mike in here.
Well, we can ask Mike. Mike, he'll get the topics, and then we can ask him, and he could chime in. But I think if we're not all focusing on trying to come up with wording of all five, and then we can bring what the three or four have, and then we could have something written in front of us that we could go off of for that next discussion.
It would be more, it'd be more like the writing of the goal, and then maybe some of the steps that we would need to achieve that goal.
Yeah, but the steps wouldn't be part of the goal. I think that would be good for the people to see what the steps are that you're envisioning, and that's why you wrote the goal. All right, so when is the next time that we're gonna come together to discuss goals?
Who's doing this?
Uh, Bill, Craig. And probably Mike, but Bill and Craig right now.
You wanna do one, one at a time?
No, we're gonna try to.
Two at a time, three at a time, Mike?
So you're going to, so we're gonna come up with a date that the next time we're gonna talk as a group about board goals. You're gonna have language for diversity.
When you talk about a date, I mean, we could talk about it tonight, we can talk about it.
I'm not saying tonight, because we don't have it written down in front of us, and I'm asking you to write out the goal. So I'm saying, this is what I pictured the goal to be. And then you bring that language.
You know, what I'm suggesting is that we wanna stagger it, so that each, maybe two at a time.
No, no. So this way they're all, 'cause we don't have, like, time is in the business.
All at once. When would be the next time that we wanna discuss workshop?
The budget, the budget workshops.
Yeah, but the budget workshops will take a lot of time, and we may actually have to schedule another, just because there's a lot of questions. So the 17th of April is the board meeting where we need to adopt the budget, so that I'm in time for filing all the papers. So April 25th is the board meeting, it's a Tuesday night, it's the one we're having because that's the budget, BOSIs budget vote.
What about the 3rd, do we have anything on the 3rd?
No.
April 3rd.
The policy meeting and the diversity.
That's okay, we could do it before or after.
But April 3rd, we're gonna keep open in case we needed to have a budget meeting.
Yeah, I honestly, while I think board goals, I know, I know priorities do shake out from board goals, but even just having this discussion tonight might help us. I think we should leave space for, because we have a lot of information we're going through.
25th?
25th of what?
March.
25th of April. Because we have, we have spring breaks. Spring breaks in the middle, that's why.
No, that says you can't do a lot of this for your email. I mean, you know, certainly you get these, and you pass them out to people, get comments back, you can do all that, right, you know.
Trying to get that to place where it's just that we're just.
All right, so let's scaffold this, because that's far away. So can we share, can we agree that whatever goal you're working on will be shared with the board in a document on April 3rd? Then that will give us the 3rd to this, when's the board meeting?
It's on the 17th and the 25th.
The 17th, that will give us to the 17th to wordsmith it from the 3rd to the 17th, and then we can look to come back and hopefully adopt on the 25th? Does that sound like a realistic timeline for people?
I just want clarification, so you said on the 3rd, is it gonna be the 3rd at the policy meeting? We're doing it, or?
Like a workshop before then, like that's.
No, I'm saying like you, we email a group and share your wording of the goal by the 3rd.
Okay.
We're not meeting, it's just saying, April 3rd.
Okay, it's the deadline, so.
Everybody's going to have their board goal area emailed to everyone, or we could create a Google doc and put it all on one. Then by the 17th, we will have revisions, and I could spearhead and put the two together and try and mesh them. Are you guys okay with me meshing the two or three peoples together?
Well, they'll hopefully.
Hopefully they're working together.
Yeah, I mean, it should be more about you just cutting and piecing each goal.
The 17th.
I'm more comfortable with you cutting in case.
I think if the three of us are working, whoever's working in a group should just finalize.
Put, put that all lines, lines around the things you want them to cut in case.
By the 17th.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, if the three people working together, there's no need for you to cut in case what they did, because they should put it together, and it should be what they want it to look like when they do it.
I agree.
So it would lessen your.
I agree. And then we have April 25th, hopefully sharing the product with the public, and then hopefully adopting, or have a conversation about adopting.
Is it something we'll put on the website?
Yeah.
Not until the 20th, until we adopt.
Anthony, who, who'd you have besides making the fiscal?
Craig. So you guys want me to read who's gonna do what again, just so we know? Communication, it was Kenya, myself, and Kristen. Community engagement was Kristen, Meredith, and Anthony. Diversity was Anthony, Kenya, and Georgia. Curriculum was myself, Meredith, and Georgia. Fiscal responsibilities or budget was Bills Off and Craig.
And probably Mike.
I'd say, yeah.
Mike will choose, he'll, we can let him know, and he can let us know.
Okay, I'm assuming fiscal, but yeah.
We're all assuming that, but I don't wanna speak for Mike. Every time I go speak for my wife, I get, no, that's not what I want, it's not, I'm gonna speak for someone else.
She's just being contrary to it.
There it is.
It really is what she wants, but she doesn't want you to know that.
All right, we're good?
And then I'll, and then I'll just review the safety and security, it may not even be needed, but.
Yep.
Ultimately, though, these are our board goals, but then they become mass.
Well, technically, they'll go into the end of the year. And then hopefully, in the summertime, before things start, because they start looking at the year's budget early in September, they start already looking at the budget once the budget's done. So hopefully in July, you know, we could start going over the goals and have it done before the school year starts.
And it's all tied to the vision, right?
That's how I.
Vision meetings are happening as well, so.
Right. So we go with the timeline?
Yes.
All right. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Sure. Questions? I just would like to thank you guys. I thought that was, we finished.